All right, it is 10 o'clock and this meeting will come to order. First go ahead or roll call and it looks like all of our trustees are here. Our counsel will not be having a day and our treasurer will be here around 3:30 I think. So then next we have a bunch of legions.
I am only the biggest.
In the space of America into the river which it stands.
One relationship with God.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and before we start our public comment section, I'd like to remind everyone that the words bird and the public's experience of the meeting. Something might object, maybe you're annoying us and et cetera. Now we will have public comment. Speakers must state their name and community and speak for no more than two minutes. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe a level of stability and decorum appropriate for a public meeting. No personal tax or disruptions from audience members. All right, so our speaker is Teresa Burkett.
Good afternoon, my name is Teresa Burkett and I live in Oats Falls. I was asked to provide these three books to Ms. Odison, Mr. Claus and Mr. Hanley. They are a story about economics. I believe the donor thought this story would be of value to you. Regarding this submitted reconsideration form, I would ask staff to ask the question, have you read the book in its entirety? Complaints tend only to be offended by a word or sentence. As for your letter, Ms. Odison, in the press, calling the press, quote, leftist propaganda, or quote, wicked woke rule, is your opinion. However, I take offense to it. Name calling does not solve problems nor provide solutions. You stated, why hasn't the press written about anything good about our libraries? You had a great opportunity to write about what was good about our libraries, but you didn't. Maybe there isn't anything positive that the sport has implemented worth writing about. Finally, you stated you weren't a member of the GCRCC, but you accepted their endorsement. That says a lot.
All right, that includes our public comment section. We will then move on to the consent agenda. Has minutes and I just want to call the attention to the fact that it's the CIN meeting minutes and CIN financial statements, not the CLN.
I have a point of order. Were there CIN, were there CIN minutes in there? I didn't see that.
It's still financial.
Right, it's not a financial report. I didn't see the minutes. If so, we need to. If not, if they're not in there, then we need to adjust back.
I didn't see them either.
Uh, no, I guess not. Uh, thank you, your point of order is well taken, so the CIN meeting minutes are not in there. So when I make a motion to accept them, we'll need to to know that. Is there any other corrections or questions, comments?
You said limited to the CIN minutes?
Oh, just on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Minus the CIN meeting minutes, which we're not in there. Uh, trustee boss?
Maybe remind me again, why was the January 11th and the two February minutes in there? Was that one that we objected to or what? I don't remember why we're going back over.
Yeah, I had that question myself, uh, business manager.
Those meeting minutes were never brought to the board for approval.
Thank you.
Okay, I move that we accept the consent agenda as listed, except with the exception of the CIN meeting minutes.
It has been moved to accept the consent agenda. Sorry, the wording, minus the CIN meeting minutes. There is no further discussion.
All there is there to further discussion.
There.
Company?
There is further discussion, trustee boss?
I frankly, I'm, uh, I don't know where I put the January and February minutes, so I really haven't looked at those at all. I think I put that in my stuff in my stack, so I I guess I would abstain from voting for those.
And further discussion? Okay, it has been moved to accept the consent agenda minus the CIN meeting minutes, which were not included. All those in favor, say aye.
I would.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so the ayes have it and the consent agenda is passed. Next, we will have the Community Library Network April 2024 financial statements.
Uh, trustee Blake? I would like to ask the staff if they have any comments about the financial statement.
I just need.
No. Business as usual.
Uh, trustee Hanning?
Yeah, I'm just curious, online and on number seven and eight on the financial statement. It looks as if we got a lot more money in. Shouldn't that show in the right-hand column on the year-to-date budget? Wouldn't that reflect when you over what we expected? If we expected zero and we got, let's say, over $300,000, I would think it would show something more than zero unless I'm not sure how this calculated.
Uh, business manager?
It's just a formula that comes over when I convert it to an Excel file. If you don't have a budgeted amount in there, it defaults to a 0%.
Great, okay.
This.
Uh, trustee Blake?
Oh, thanks. This, this was unexpected funds, is that correct? Yeah, I mean, why we wouldn't.
It was a U R D, I think, wasn't it?
No, it's not even. It's tax relief.
Oh, yeah.
They were unexpected. At our budget time, we didn't have the ability to budget for it. That's right. That's why we have no budget numbers.
We knew we were going to receive something, but we just had any idea about how much.
So this is it, huh?
Uh, trustee boss?
But it's because our regular property taxes are lower because people didn't pay as much. So some of the property, personal property or the property taxes and state tax should be close to our budget.
trustee Hanning?
My just a compliment, we were able to be spending up to 58 and a fraction percent of our budget for the year. We're well within that 49.2, so compliments to the staff for managing the money carefully. We're under currently under budget all we've spent so far. Thank you.
And the unique recovery statistics, the total return on investment is 10 to 1. That's, I mean, not like it's a huge amount. I just was curious, isn't that normally 12,1?
Yeah, it used to be.
All right.
It varies.
Okay. Well, yeah, I just, but it just seems like 12 was stuck in my head, so. Um, very interesting. Boss?
And I was trying to find, I'm not real sure. Where was the Hayden roof expenses? Has that been paid or is that
All right, go ahead, business manager.
Um, it'll show up on a balance sheet as the building's number.
That's highlighted, so, yeah.
I put it in the description in my analysis that that's where it would show up. You can also see at the very, very bottom of the income statement, there's a line 86.
Was, was line 86, is that the is that several things, that's not just.
That's just the.
208,000?
Yes.
Wow. So, okay.
Okay, I'm going to move that we accept the Community Library Network financial statements for the month, month, seven months, ending April 30th, 2024.
It has been moved to accept the Community Library Network, um, April 2024 financial statements. Actually, you said seven months.
Oh, I just was reading it from there.
That's fine, okay. There is no further discussion, is there? I was asking, yes. Um, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The extensions? Okay, I thought it sounds like the ayes have it and the Community Library Network April 2024 financial statements are accepted. All right, and so next we have the discussion with Community Library Network April 2024, carried forward balance analysis. Any questions, comments? Okay, if there. Okay, trustee Robinson?
I just want to point out that I think that, I think before in other meetings that trustees have had questions about this and it was brought up that this would be the meeting to ask certain questions about it. Um, having to do with maybe the how many months for extra emergency funds. Is that something we could re-bring up during the presentation of the audit or is that something?
Oh, it's part of the audit. I said if it's part of the audit.
Well, no, I'm asking, and I haven't necessarily had questions about it, but I know other trustees have, so I want to make sure they know when to bring this up to the professional that's here today because they've been pointed that direction that she would be the one to ask. So should that be asked now since we're talking about it or can this candidate be brought up during the presentation?
Uh, if the carrying forward worksheet is part of the audit, then that would be part of the audit. But if you guys have questions on the carrying forward, now would be a good time.
Well, because usually have questions, so.
What's that?
I guess. Uh, trustee Hanning?
I was just going to say, it appears that our carried forward amount of money is adequate and in line with the recommendations from the auditor in the past.
Okay, if there are no further comments or questions, uh, then we will move on to the carrying forward discussion. And we'll be going to circulation statistics. Questions or comments on the circulation statistics? Just looking at.
To the. Yeah, I, I just, the comment I have is, so the big hits are still Athol and Post Falls, is that correct? We're, we're seeing higher numbers at Hayden. Um, but everybody else is, bathroom is up. Spirit Lake is up. There's some.
About the same, okay, all right. Perfect.
I would just point out that this now has the card holders broken down by card type. This was added into our question in the word.
Thank you, it's appreciated. Trustee class?
So this on the card holder question, that's just the number that have been added to the, to, uh, through the end of the month. Here, we still don't have a total, or I guess.
The phrase below that, right?
Total is the last.
Total, it's total just for the year. Or is it total? Absolute total? Current total, okay.
Uh, sister Drager?
I was just going to state that the current card holders, which the bolded number is the 46,000, 035. The numbers that are below that are what were asked for last month. So that is the total number of all card types that we currently have, not the number that were added this month, but the total number in distribution. That makes sense?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Hey, if there are.
Make a motion as well. Do you want, do you want to prepare for this? And move on.
Yeah, it's not an action item, so we can give a motion, just I was going to say if there's no further comments or questions, then we will move on to your presentation by auditor. Go ahead, you have the authority.
Just go on.
Okay. Naomi?
Yes.
My name is Tony Hackwith and I am with Alpine Summit, formerly known as Anderson Brothers. We changed our name, but not anything else, still same staff and owners and such, so. That's what we might see that name and question, why it's that not Anderson Brothers? Um, I am going to go over your financial statement, your audited financial statement for your year-end, September 30th, 2023. I believe that all of you have the financial statement. I think you received it in PDF form and now you have a third copy in front of you. Um, I'm not going to go through page by page as it's 40 different pages. It's probably boring each of them if I talk about everything. So I'm just going to talk, hit on some highlights, hit on some of the financial statements and stop me if you have questions. And I will talk a bit about fund balance too, so. Pages one and two are our report that we issue as a result of the audit procedures. Um, your report is a plain opinion, also in our terms called an unmodified opinion. So meaning we were able to review and audit your financial numbers and that we feel are materially correct based on our procedures. The purpose of a financial statement audit is to do that, is to issue an opinion on whether you can rely on the financial statements and financial numbers that are presented to you. It's not a fraud audit. We do have to be aware that fraud exists and do procedures around that, but it is not specifically a fraud audit. That would be a separate type of litigation. You are required to have a financial statement audit because of state regulations, state statutes. Page four through 10 is what's called the management's discussion and analysis. And this is a document that you've wrote that talked about your financial numbers. It's kind of like a book report. It's a narrative of what's gone on in the district and talks about the different financial statements and changes in the financial statements. Not going to go through that, but I am going to talk about the actual financial statements. Page 11 through 13. Um, governmental accounting requires you to present your financial statements in two different formats. One is the full accrual format, which is what you would see in a business where you have capital assets are on your balance sheets, long-term liabilities on your balance sheet. And then you have depreciation expense and such on your income statement. These are your full accrual statements that are similar to a business. You operate more on what's called a modified accrual basis where you're, you're operating on your cash in, cash out. And then your balance sheet just shows current resources, so receivables that are due to you within a year, payables that you owe within a year. So those are on, start on page 14 and that's, those are what I'm primarily going to talk about as that's what you operate on and what you focus on that basis. So page 14 is your balance sheet at September 30th, 2023. Um, you can see so your total assets are 3.8 million, which includes some receivables and property tax receivables, but the majority of that is, are your cash balances, of which 326,000 of your cash is restricted for particular grants and donations. Um, down at the bottom, your fund balance, so your, your assets less your liabilities equals your fund balance. What you have in reserves for expenditures in the future for savings, I mean, savings. Um, so the restricted grants and donations are 326. You have actually assigned part of your fund balance for capital asset repair and replacement. And that amount is 831,000 at September 30th. And what's left then is your unassigned fund balance and that amount or balance is what's for operating expenses that are unassigned, so, and also for unexpected emergencies. Um, it provides monies for capital improvements that are needed in the future, repairs and maintenance. If you were to be borrowing to have a building built or something, that's where you can have to go out or bond. It gives you a much better credit rating with a lower interest rate if you have a healthy fund balance. Um, and one of the main reasons for uh, the governmental entities in Idaho per se that receive property tax revenue is that you receive those revenues in two month sums. You receive it in July and then in January. So those six months, you need to have reserve operating on. So you're not the typical business where you have revenue coming in monthly, you pay your expenses monthly. You have your operating expenses that do have to be paid monthly, but your, your large sums of money come in in two six-month increments. So it's very important that you have a fund balance. Um, your unassigned fund balance at year-end had about five months of operating expenses in it, which would be a very reasonable amount. Any questions on fund balance? I know that. Page 15. Um, it talked about the full accrual and the modified accrual statements. This reconciliation just shows you the difference of presentation of those two statements. Uh, I'm not going to get into the details and such on that because it basically is showing you that you operate on a modified accrual and then full accrual, you add capital assets, lumped term liabilities. So that's the change in your financial position of fund balance, but that's a reconciliation. If you have questions on this after the meeting or at any other time, feel free to call me, email me, I can explain that. Page 16 is your statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance. So this is your income statement for the year. Um, your current, your change, so your revenues over your expenses for this last year was about 101,000. The prior year, 101,000, and then the prior was 397,000. Um, differences, uh, some differences that relate to that are um, your total revenues were $200,000 more. This included though, um, an increase in property taxes of 200,000, which 43,000 of that, you're not going to get next year. That was an urban renewal agency amount that came to you. So your general increase would have been about 150,000, not 200,000 for the year. Um, your interest income was up 56,000 and that was due to an interest rate increase that you received. And then your grant revenues were down about $96,000 and that's just, I mean, on, you know, grants that you do receive and such. Your expenditures were 496,000 more than the prior year. Um, part of that was due to personnel costs. Um, you had a compensation study performed and so wages were adjusted due to that. So the wages went up about 12%. Um, and then health insurance increased by 15%, which we're seeing that each year, that percentage go higher and higher and higher all over across the board, the entities. Your operating costs were 141,000 more. Um, 59,000 of this was increased, an increase in your legal and professional, which includes legal fees, the compensation study and also your executive director search. You had an increase in snow removal of about 31,000. So those are the, the top two items in your operating costs that increased.
In what line are you looking at?
Oh. So, so personnel, that's, that's the 379,000 that goes.
Okay.
And then your operating expenses include all other, basically operating expenses. What I talked about was a legal and the snow removal. Those two items in your operating expenses had the largest increases on the prior year. Okay, so pages 18, 19 and 20, these are the financial statements for CIN. And really no significant changes from the prior year. Revenues are pretty consistent, expenditures pretty consistent. Your operating income was about $4,500 in the prior year. It was a slight loss of, I think about 400 or 500, so it doesn't change a lot. Okay. Then pages 21 through 39, these are your notes to the financial statements. So they explain your accounting policies, procedures, give a little more detail of the financial components that are in your financial statements, like your capital assets, your long-term liabilities and such. So again, I'm not going to go through those. Page 40, I think there were some questions on this, at least I do have questions from many folks on the Percy liability. Um, 2015, I think it was, um, the governmental founding standards board said that state pension plans, um, the individual government entities started, had to start calculating with an actuarial study and such, their potential pension liability at year-end. So this schedule shows, um, and then you have to present 10 years. This schedule shows what your portion of the net pension liability is. So this last year, um, in column, the 930, 23 column, your, your estimated pension liability was 2,094,000. The prior year was 2,36,000 and actually in '21, you actually had an asset. Um, and it, it really, it's nothing that you do or can do with that number. It's the state of Idaho Percy plan has to have an actuarial study done and they adjust all those numbers, estimates and all of that. So, um, I do have some entities that get concerned about this huge liability that's on the statement. Percy, our Idaho Percy Fund being defunct and not able to provide retirement benefits to retirees is very minimal, but that's why this came out is that in the Middle East or Midwest, sorry, there were some cities that actually had not funded their pension plan enough. And then when they haven't tireraced, there was not, there are funds there. So that was why. So that was why this started having to be presented. Okay. Page forty-one and forty-two, forty-one is just your budget to actual statement for the year. So it shows what you had originally budgeted as far as revenues and expenses, and then the actual amounts that did occur, and then the variance. So your revenues were about a hundred and sixty thousand more than what you had anticipated, and your expenses were about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand less than you had anticipated. So you had a positive variance on your budget to actual. And then
I'm a little confused on the bottom right there. You've got one point two-six million more at September thirtieth than what we thought we would have. Is that what that says, variance with the budget?
Correct. Correct. You had anticipated having an ending fund balance of two point one six seven, and you actually had an ending fund balance of three point four. Now, eight hundred and forty thousand of that is assigned, and another three hundred and sixty thousand is not the of of that is restricted monies that you had. So, yeah, so you your your fund balance was actually higher because your revenues were higher and your expenses were less. So the change was actually higher when you had budgeted.
That kind of surprises me because all during that time, we were talking about not having or we were not getting enough money. So I guess I don't have to get an answer now, but I won't look into. Why did we end up with one point two-six million more last year? I know I got assigned, but where'd it come from?
It was just, it was, you had budgeted, yes, that you would have two point one six seven. So you had budgeted that your revenues were are going to be a little less than they actually were, which, you know, happened due to many different factors. Property taxes you estimate, and they can come in higher. And then other revenues, your intergovernmental revenues, like your state sales tax, your liquor funds, your highway funds, those are also an estimate. And generally, if you want to budget very conservative on your revenue side, and that's what we would do and what I'm assuming you do do. And then on the expense side, generally, you want to make those a little higher, just to make sure that you're covered. So your expenses were a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars less than what you had budgeted, so.
But the revenue was based on a hundred and sixty thousand more on the top section, and the expenses, a hundred and seventy-six thousand less. So I would think I would add those two together to find the difference.
Yep, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, it's right there, excess of revenues over expenses.
But that doesn't explain the one point two-six million.
Well, you had budgeted that you were going to have a beginning fund balance. Your budget is is done months and months prior to this actual financial statement being issued. So if you look on fund balance beginning line, you had anticipated originally that you would have two point one million of fund balance beginning. And then your amended amount was two point four, but your actual amount ended up being three point three million. You don't know that number until your financial statement audit has been completed. So your beginning number is your ending number at nine thirty twenty-two. So when you're proposing or putting together your nine thirty twenty-three budget, your financial statement audit has not been completed at nine thirty twenty-two, so it's an estimate.
So the three point three million on the actual fund balance, that was September or October first?
October first, twenty twenty.
Twenty-two.
That was your your beginning fund balance.
Okay, so I don't know what happened then. Okay.
Any other questions? Explain that. My explanations don't make sense to me, but I said, so anyway, page forty-three and forty-four. As a governmental entity in Idaho, we have to review. We have to make sure that you have internal controls in place. And so we review that, make sure you do have internal control in place. If we find that you're deficient, significantly deficient in areas, then we would have to bring that to your attention, and we would put it in this report. If we found significant errors and things of that sort, that would also go into this report. And also, you have, you have to report on your compliance with laws and regulations. Now, this is as it pertains to financial reporting and things like your payroll reporting. Are you filing your quarterlies on time, or are you filing them and things of that sort? So it's it's not all laws and regulations, it's specific to financial reporting. Anyway, this report that we issued is also a clean opinion. We did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in your systems or in the financial statement numbers themselves.
It's more more of a general one. Why do we say when we, or why do we have to say when we file our budget for the county, the public notice that we've got an eight-point or million-dollar budget when our revenues and our expenses are really more like six million, I'll look on page eight. But anyway, I'm a little confused, why we have to show the money we have? I think what it is, is the two point four million September thirtieth or October first in the bank. Why is that considered income? It's just, it's just money, it's it's our assets, but why do we add it to income, which is, you know, showing here is more like six million of it.
It's including your fund balance, so your fund balance would be
Why would anyone, an accountant especially, call that income? It's an asset, but it's not income. We get six
You're right, it's reserves that you can, so if you take your reserves plus what you anticipate receiving for that year, that's your expenses. So that's, you'd have to ask. The G A O. So that's just how it's, yeah.
If you've got assets, money in the bank, why do you consider it income?
It's not considered income.
Well, it's added, and that's how we get eight point three.
It's monies that you have in the bank to use for operations.
Sure.
And then you're gonna add to that, and then you have your expenses. So that's how everyone
I just completely agree with calling it an eight-point-four million dollar budget, when we're only getting six million.
Okay, our business manager like to add to the conversation?
When they fill out the paperwork for the State Tax Commission, if we don't include our carry forward, then we're not allowed to use that in the expenditures unless you go out and reopen your budget. So it's it's part of recurring to the state that we we have carry forward, and we may use it for operations, and we do use it for operations until we get our check in January. So if we don't list that we have carry forward funds, you can't use them.
Preston, thank you.
So I have one question for Tony. So what does G O A stand for?
Oh, G O A, Government Accounting Office.
Okay, and they are the people that tell us what, how this has to be done. You didn't choose to show it this way. It's, this is the way the Government Accounting Office wants it to be shown, is that?
That is the standard practice for governmental
Okay, I think that's really important to understand, that this isn't a choice you are making personally. This is a standard choice.
This is standard in government.
Actually, it's not, I didn't mean to say choice. This is how it's done.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it it certainly, it's not in in your business, you wouldn't. You don't do that, and that's not standard practice, for sure. But yeah, governmental accounting, they, you are supposed to consider what you have and what you're going to receive, and less what your expenses are.
Are there questions? Could you have anything else you wanted to add?
Just thank you, Stan. We come in and we take a lot of their time from their regular duties, so, yeah, appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
For the presentation.
No, thank you for the business office for getting a clean audit. That was that's all that matters. Thank you. Not to be taken for bad.
Great. Well, then, I guess if there's nothing further, that concludes the audit presentation portion of our agenda. And we'll move on to the director's report. There be a motion to accept the audit? Oh, uh, thank you. Yeah, I skipped right over that. Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the audits.
I moved to accept the audit for twenty twenty-three.
It has been moved to accept the audit for twenty twenty-three. There's no further discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it sounds unanimous. I just have it, the audits. Accept the odds by twenty-three. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
All right, so, yeah, thanks for keeping me on track there, business manager, and we will now have the director's report.
I did include in your tail packet a free printout of it, just a couple of things I'll highlight. In your board packet, you did get a courtesy collection and technical services coordinator job description. It was board approved accurately, but when we reformatted it, we made an error, and it was listed as F L S A non-exempt, but it's actually exempt, and so you've gotten the correct one, so replace the other version. The postfalls and Apple library projects are moving forward. Compass Construction began the demo portion of their repair work in Apple on Monday, May thirteen. Demo for postfalls begins on Monday, May twenty, and voice station instead of the drywall cutting on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. The contractor confirmed approval of building permits granted by the city of Post Falls. Apple is anticipated to reopen in late August. Post Falls is slated to open in about six months with construction taking four to five months, and contents being brought back to the site an additional about three weeks. The director of Apple submitted the I-CRIMP insurance documentation for replacing personal property damage items for postfalls. Approximately sixty-two hundred A B materials and eight hundred books were damaged by the event. The total request for collection loss, which includes stockage, processing supplies, and the cost of replacement items is two hundred and thirty thousand. The youth area items lost had a replacement cost of nineteen thousand. The well-readness and bookishly happy local book sellers held a fundraiser for the library and donated over eleven hundred and five hundred and forty dollars respectively for the Apple and Post Falls projects. We were selected to receive a donation of two thousand DVDs and Blu-rays of popular films and documentaries from regional business. The donor raised four shipments of five hundred items each in May, June, July, and August. This way staff can spread the donation out to make it easier to store and process as needed. Seal and Friends continues to raise funds and has made another donation to the libraries affected by water damage.
Preston, pass.
So the two thousand DVDs, are those ones that were damaged, or are these are mixture of what you know, or is it the choice of the business that's given?
We were approached by the business. They have two thousand high-interest, high-demand DVDs. They've been played one time and then were stored in a climate-controlled setting and typically distributed to public libraries in batches to different libraries. However, this time, we were the recipients, the selective recipients. I really don't have more information than that. We should be getting our first bundle soon, if we haven't already.
True.
Preston.
When we get a donation, like, do we send some kind of a recognition or a thank you of some sort to the for the donation? I'm just curious how they find out that we actually appreciate it. Either that may be a phone call from the staff, I don't know.
I have personal notes for the bookstores. We have not done anything yet to recognize this business. We haven't received anything yet. It does depend on where the item was donated or what the item was donated. Our foundation has a process, our friends has a process, and then if it comes directly to a library, then we typically handle that.
Thank you.
But we do very much appreciate all of the community. As I've said, I'm gonna put together a collective list of all the contributions and donations that we received. It just, I just wanted to let you know that that momentum is continuing.
We can move on, question?
Uh, Preston, have any?
Yeah, I'm going back to the dollar figure there for the losses. Was that nineteen thousand some odd dollars included in the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar figure? Or are they at least two different numbers you
So personal or business property can include our collection, our loss collection, and it can also include everything from, in this case, the youth service items were puzzles, puppets, rugs, all of those types of materials. The youth area and the closet and supply area was flooded as well. And so, again, it's about twenty thousand dollars of items that were in those cabinets and in that space. So they are separate.
One question. So does it appear we're still in good shape regarding the now new total cost of the losses there? Which regard to what the insurance company is paying between construction and loss of materials? If this is the right part of the meeting that asked that question.
I'll just answer somewhat broadly. I will mention that the board agreed to have a conversation with our I-CRIMP adjuster that had initially been scheduled, but when legal counsel wasn't going to be present, that was removed from this meeting's agenda. I'll say generally, what I have understood from the adjuster is that whatever expenses we have, that they may just turn over a check to the district that would make the claim an even million dollars.
Sure.
Preston.
So are we still approximately, or do we think we're still within the one million dollar claim with everything we know so far?
I've stated repeatedly that until demo begins at postfall, I'm reluctant to say anything regarding construction repair costs. Once we open up the drywall and can ascertain if there are some repairs that we were not able to visibly observe. And again, I'm hoping the last week in May and the first part of June will have more information.
Thanks. Someone else? Uh, Preston, pass?
It's kind of along the same lines. We've got the contractor doing permits for the construction. Do we ever get to actually get a quote on the construction part? So that's what you presented to us, but it might change. There might be a change order if there's extra work because of the unknown damage in the walls. Is that accurate?
So it would probably not be framed as a change order. There would probably be a conversation between the contractor and the I-CRIMP and the adjusters to determine what that amount might There would probably be a conversation between the contractor and the I crimp and the adjusters to determine what that amount might be. So currently, within the scope of our agreement, we cut this construction. There is no mold remediation or any type of stud repair placement or, you know, anything that might come up. And so it would not be within the scope of our current contract. That would be reviewed by the I crimp adjuster. And then, so there's, there's no. Probably change order because it's not within the scope of the project, if that makes sense. But we should know more in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Henn?
Yeah, as we're aware that that January freeze was unusual, but not unprecedented. And I do remember asking in another meeting. What kind of remediation or media, kind of, sorry, stuffs we taking so that we don't go through this possibility again? Meaning for the Athol site, is there going to be an inside shuttle valve or some way of insulating that hose bib that went bad and flooded the floor? And is there any way of heating or monitoring what's going on in the ceiling for post falls? Because again, this was not a record setting cold. We'll get cold again someday. I don't know when. But. If our insurance company, I'd be hesitant to ensure if we don't do something that corrects the threat for the future. So I would like to know is the scope of the contract or is there what's going on in that area of ensuring we don't go through the same problem potentially next year or years to come?
Director?
So I feel comfortable talking about Athol because it is highly unlikely that we will hit the cap of the claim limit. Again, I'm going to reiterate that making comments related to post falls is not what legal counsel has advised. I think that executive session would be the most appropriate avenue for that. But I will speak about Athol because I feel secure in the knowledge that we will likely not go over that limit. For the Athol library, we did decide to modify the plumbing at the location that leaked. And it was minor, and we hope that that will be an improvement. So I don't mind stating that we have made plumbing modifications at Athol with the hopes that. It will be more weather resistant. I don't want to avoid answering your question for post falls, but again, I don't think that open meeting is the most appropriate location. And I again strongly encourage the board to find time on an agenda when legal counsel is present. That we can meet with our insurance adjusters in executive session.
Anyone else? Okay, if there is. We can resume. Just didn't want to bet, yeah. Right, so if there's no further questions or comments, then we will move on. We had scheduled the break next. It seems like we're sipping through things. Can or should we delay that or should we just go ahead now?
We're almost an hour ahead. So.
Well, then, all right, we will relay the break. And you guys remind me in case I. I get to television. That we will give the break without having our. All right, so our next item is discussion of material selection and acquisition policy. Hey, who would like to start us off? And Mr. Henry?
I just want to see if I, if we're all starting or we. Resuming in the right place. I'm not certain, are we, are we, did we finish or stop at page three, whether red text business is at where we are now? Well, it's more of a question rather than a statement, but. I forget, well, I think that's where we left off, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Bass?
So I left this first on page one, we. We're talking, put it in bold. We were talking about. Changing definition or description of the fiction with sets so that the bold was. A suggestion, but we never finalized on that paragraph that we're. Taking it or for changing it or what, I think we're still there, but we skipped over and we went down. To the page three, because they're kind of tied together. In the page three one. We were. We never actually decided on this in the brackets either. So. Those are the two things left. We can do the page three if that's what you want, but there's still, there's still a page one that isn't.
And Mr. Henn?
Yeah, I'm aware of those that I know of those two red sections, page one. Although I thought I wasn't sure if we finished that or not, and then page three, we were, I know we were, I think we left off there last time. And then I have just so surprised, I have one little miniature pad on when we're done. We get that apart wherever we are, and that's to do with reports. We ask for once periodic reports. And those are only good for the memory of the current board. And so I have a very maybe three sentence or two sentence added paragraph that says basically we'll get monthly reports, you know, regularly. So anyway, that's, that's all I'm aware of, of where we are in this, in this policy as a whole.
So I was wondering if it might not be a good idea to have a subsection under selection process. On the current version, selection process starts at the very end of page two. And then goes to page three. If we have some section entitled special considerations for materials for minors or just materials for minors. It's just like a one place for all the. The requirements for minors materials. What do you guys think of that?
Question.
Jesse Henn?
So I'm just trying to, are we just saying we, we would relabel and maybe rework the red text on the third page? And give it a new name, that group, is that, so I understand what you're asking us.
Yeah, just a subsection under selection process, so on the current, it would be page three. Materials for minors and it would be within the selection process. Heading. Now, does that confuse things or do you think it would make things more clear for staff? Does it like? Well, what are you planning to include under materials for minors? I mean, it's a nice. Title, but what's supposed to be under it? The. Paragraph on the first page protecting minors from explicit and potentially developmentally damaging sexual content. So that paragraph and then the other red paragraph that's already on page three. Easier for staff or or not? If that would be my intent, and if it doesn't make it easier, then there's no point in it. About objection, Mr. Manager?
I mean, I do think there could be some validity to adding a section called special consideration. And I haven't thought that through, but it's, I'm personally not opposed. At the director.
Yeah. Director?
In the version that staff presented to the board, there was a section called materials for minors. And it allowed more specificity, and so I don't have any objection.
And trust it was.
So what we're. Doing with this policy is specifically talking about minors, this whole definition harmful to minors. Not sure why you want to add a section, you're just trying to set these two paragraphs. And to make it clearer because. To me, I think the whole thing is pretty much talking about harmful to minors. So I don't think we need it, but maybe I'm not seeing, should I edit what you are suggesting so we can see it?
If other people are favorable, I just was floating the idea, I wasn't dead set on it. Mr. Henn?
I would say if we were going to make a special paragraph or heading, it would include the one sentence above the red text, books and materials, I would assume that should be part of it. Or was a minor that defined that probably belongs, if you're going to put a separate paragraph heading there for minors. And then I, and there's some typos in that red, in that red text, by the way. There is in the bold where it says nudity representing, it says these, it should be those. You take that, this type by someone there. And. Any else?
Where was that?
In the very bold or a page three, it is, in the bold inside the red, it says and doesn't contain nudity representing should be those.
Oh, this should be those.
But I could see, I could see tweaking this a little bit too, because it seems so somewhat repetitious from the red text on the first page. Maybe we could say at the beginning of the red, a particular concern protecting children because it's, it's, again, it's somewhat repetitious. And, and then scratch off with the entire community, library, board and staff. We've already said that in the opening paragraph. I think that's a little redundant, otherwise I can live with it in general, the rest of it.
Okay, so you said scratch for the entire community, library, board and staff?
Yeah. Because it's contained in the first paragraph already.
Okay, do we have on that scratching or removing for the entire community, library, board and staff? I'm. I'm finding that.
And there it goes.
Well, let's.
Oh, yeah.
Do one thing.
Oh, I'm done, yeah.
Mr. Bass?
Oh, I would oppose to putting this zero to twelve. And, and I thought we kind of agreed to drop the paragraph, but then. Are we bringing it all back in again and just adding these extra words? I don't know what we're giving, it's like we're already kind of gone through this.
Yeah, I think the last time we discussed that, we put this in here to consider. I don't think that there was actually consensus in adding it.
Yeah.
Mr. Henn?
Yeah, I was going to say. If we're first reading this, it looks as if. It's okay for mild nudity for people that are age zero through twelve. Then I guess no nudity at all for those that are thirteen on up. I don't, just I'm saying on a glance read on that, that's, so as long as we have innocent nature nudity. It's okay for zero through twelve. I just, it's a little confusing, it's difficult to work in my mind, it's, it. I understand the intent, I could interpret what looks like innocent nudity, but how that's interpreted, I don't know. By any, by anyone who wants either twisted farther up or down the scale, so. The struggle, I don't know if the entire paragraph helps or doesn't help. I struggled over it, looked over it, read it and reread it at home and. I don't have a solution for that or an answer really, but I can live without the entire thing. And I can live with it the way it is with the minor tweaks that we've made just now.
Okay, Mr. Bass?
I'm looking, you know, we go through all the definition and I don't really know what this does to help us. It isn't changing the definition for those under twelve, twelve and under. Or is this supposed to be adding supplementing the definition for zero to twelve?
Yeah, I believe the attorney had said that that we can be more restrictive with the zero to twelve group. So it was his thought that this, this paragraph. Would protect the zero to twelve age group even more. But if we don't have consensus to add it, then. Add it.
I would have changed on page two, all these definitions that we've got here. With their view. It just seems like it's throwing something in that isn't really defined. Because we're defining nudity.
Yeah.
Changing the definition for zero to twelve, it seems like it should go in the definition.
Well, it, I believe that according to law, it's had more. More acceptable in the older age groups, but we can restrict it if we put it in here that it could be more restrictive. Or the zero to twelve. So, and Mr. Henn?
That's where I was trying to, confusion because under the nudity, you know, it's saying you can't have a description of a human. Let me see, description, I think it was a picture, oh, yeah, or. Yeah, showing and including having shown your pubic area, genital buttocks. That's specifically outlining that, and then yet we're saying that's okay for zero to twelve. And that's, that was where I, I struggled to understand how to fit this in. I almost feel that the red text on page three somewhat contradicts the definition of what we mean by nudity then. It's, it's making an exception for it. Or bad, I don't know, but that's the way I read it. We're saying you're either covered up in opaque thing and then this in here says it's okay. So I. I feel like there's conflict within the same policy when I see this.
Mr. Bank?
Thanks, I didn't even have my hand up. Okay, so no, so. No nudity. The nudity in on page two means no nudity at all in, in kids, in little kid book in zero to twelve book? Is that what you're saying? And that the red on page three allows it and you don't care for that? Is that what's being said?
Press your ethics.
Yeah, it's, you know, I'm trying to pay attention here. There's, I feel like one is saying nudity period, the other one is non-sexual nudity. So there is a difference.
Mr. Bass?
Yeah, I, I think we just need to just stay with our definition that we have, and it applies to everything. And if we want to, I still think the minors card is where we. Get into specifics of what could be going into that section that's missing from the minors card section now. I don't want to using definitions of nudity. It's for minors, minors is under eighteen. And I think we've gone through that pretty thoroughly, and that is an updated version from courts from. I don't know that. I don't change theirs particularly, but some of this is updated from other court cases is how it came, I think. So I would rather just stay with our definition and not have this paragraph.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. So. Possibly, since the material selection and acquisition policy is, of course, for anybody to look at and, and. Read and understand, but it's mostly a policy for the staff to follow when they're actually purchasing which books are going to purchase. So I would really like to hear. From the staff that is here, even though they're not the ones that are purchasing them exactly, but they oversee the ones that do, and they understand that whole situation. If, if this, these two situations that's. Page two and page three actually do contradict each other, and would it get harder for the person? Who's purchasing the books to follow? You know what I mean? Because I would, we all staff and the board want to, especially with this new law out there. We all want to make sure we're doing it right. So if we can talk about, is it contradicting each other? And of course, we can talk about that and have our opinions. But I think it's important to find out from the staff if if they're able to follow this with confidence.
Okay, um, staff. I guess I could have suggested.
So what I remember from our attorney last time we met was that we cannot apply the same same standard. For someone who's zero years and someone who's eighteen years. That's why we're going into this clarification for ages zero to twelve. It's the same reason why you can't have a five-year-old drive a car, but you can have a sixteen-year-old drive a car. They're all minors, but they all have different abilities and different laws that apply to them. So for me, having this paragraph on page. Is that page three? Um. It is helpful to staff because we are saying that there will be no non-sexual nudity. In the children's like zero to twelve books. And the very last sentence says there will be no graphic visual or written depiction of sex in this collection. That is incredibly clear and incredibly helpful when selecting material for this collection.
And director. I'll just reiterate that some of the language that you're reading in there was from the staff's version of the proposed policy. And I think it's very important that it is clear and specific. And so kind of along those lines, that is why we drafted in that format. I will say I have deep, deep concerns about how the board has chosen to create definitions. For this policy, um, we'll talk about it further under the reconsideration policy and the harmful to minors. But that specific language is going to need to be in the withdrawal policy. And again, now we have a CLN definition of nudity. And then we have a harmful to minors definition in a different policy. And as much as you keep using the same words, but with slightly different nuances. The more it confuses an individual, it's, it's better to be consistent. Um, I know that the board's desire is to be more. Um. Guided in acquisitions because they feel they have the more constitutional latitude in that way. Some of what you're describing though, in that language is viewpoint. And again, I'm not certain that it will pass our legal department or legal review. And so I guess one of my points would be to. Identify when you want to approve this policy and have legal review specific points as soon as possible. I feel like we're spending a lot of time going over this and that, and we haven't even gotten a strict legal interpretation. And I know he wants to read it in its entirety, but again, we have a deadline for our withdrawal and our. Our reconsideration policy, and so that must be done. By law, and so I think that's the priority.
Trustee Blanks.
That was brought up last time about the inconsistent definitions. We got into this because. We changed, we had two policies and we changed the names. The withdrawal policy clearly has to follow Idaho law, so I would propose the. Section in Idaho, in the with, change the names of the two, so. The withdrawal policy has the same name as the Idaho statute harmful to minors and change the name of. The definitions. Under definitions, uh, step harmful minors use materials inappropriate to minors that we were using. In the withdrawal, because the withdrawal has to follow the Idaho statute. This selection acquisition is one that is a little bit different, so I don't think we should use the same name. That Idaho code has.
Trustee Hamlin.
I think we did that last time on page two at the very top, under this section, CLN harmful minors. I think that was what we did to help clarify that.
It was an idea.
Same, that was, um.
But, but then we're still using the wrong name on the other folks.
The other one is the Idaho. Or for the minors, and this is the CLI harmful to minors, which is more restrictive, if that's my understanding of what we're doing here. Uh, and there was another, I just saw I had marked at home as well. There was another typo in the red text on the third page. Uh, there was some repetition. If you go at, you see. Uh, it's in between the two, um, red bolds. It says, and the material was specifically, and then it said was specifically written, I scratched out, so. And the material was specifically, I scratched out, was written specifically. It's it's in there twice, so. Uh, I think it should be, and the material was specifically and cross out was specifically written specifically. Written and geared toward, there's something wrong with that, and it doesn't match up to the. Book of paper, I think it was provided, so.
Sorry, I shouldn't, I don't want to talk which.
Okay, oh, uh. It says there's bold, this is an innocent in nature, then it says, and the material was specifically, that's okay. Then I would cross out was written specifically, which is repetitive. There was a mistake. So it would then read, and the material was specifically written and geared towards, that's the way it should be. That was a catch I had there. And and I'm, it just helps staff to some degree to know how extra focus I want, where we want on a zero to twelve, I'm. I'm perfectly acceptable leaving this extra add-on in the. Um, I'll see, I would open the whole, the whole sentence that I told you, and it's okay if you don't agree, a particular concern. Protecting children age zero to twelve as the opening, just to make it clear. Only because it's written so much, so similar to what was on page one. I believe that was, oh, and I wanted a question. Uh, it was, have we do there? Oh, I'm sorry.
The sentence right here, oh.
Yeah, the beginning, yeah, the very first I said, I I'm suggesting a particular concern, comma, protecting children. That's what I suggest there.
So before we get too far into editing that paragraph, do we have a consensus to even have it in there? I am.
I prefer not, I'm sorry. I prefer not, but I can go with it if it's desired by the majority.
As you go either way, you have Robinson or Blake, what are your thoughts on that paragraph?
No, it's, it's tighter strictly.
On page three?
Yep.
Well, if staff feels like that should be in there to help them be more clear, then I'm for that.
Okay, so Robinson and Edison are a yes and you're a yes or no, you don't care. So I'm set. Want to jump in for the, the majority? Trustee Blake.
The, uh, yeah, are you including, uh. The bold and innocent nature and doesn't contain nudity representing those who've gone through puberty, is that included in that paragraph?
Uh, yeah, the whole thing, it is.
So that, because it's in brackets on mine, I didn't know whether you. Considering that, and then I do have a question on that paragraph.
Okay, well, let's ascertain that we have.
I can drop it. I I, my preference is to drop it personally. It's not a strong one, but I prefer to drop the entire paragraph. If it's desired by most people to keep it, I can, but I'll say no, I'd rather drop, drop it out.
Okay, well, then it sounds like we only have two that that are, I guess we want it in there and it's just, uh, not majority consensus. So we don't need to edit it because it's not even in there. Uh, trustee Blanks.
So we, we never, we decided to do this because we didn't resolve the contradiction. Of the definitions, or with the other definitions, says no nudity, it must. Was that something I missed? We're, we're not going to take this paragraph, but it does contradict our definition.
Okay, well, it, it's a moot point if we don't have consensus to have it in there. Alrighty, uh, trustee Hamlin.
Yeah, with the, with the chairman's permission, I would like to get out that three sentences, I guess two sentences. Regarding adding a report in this policy. If that's where we are right now.
Could we clean up the other things?
That's a good chair.
Yeah, perhaps we we should agree or or find out whether we agree on adding these other red portions. So back to page one, protecting minors from explicit and potentially development and damaging with sexual content. Do we have consensus on putting that in there? Because it was just added as a consideration. Uh, trustee Blake?
I have a question on the, on the general policy, so at some point in time, would there be space to ask that question?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, we definitely want to ask and answer all the questions that we can.
Do you want me to ask that now or do you want me to ask it?
Um, I I would rather get through the the red portions and and have find out what the version is. Okay, so. Consensus on. Adding that. Red paragraph on page two.
Oh, page one.
Page one, sorry.
You're asking yes for me?
Uh, I would be a yes. Trustee Blanks.
So, so the bold was what we talked about adding last meeting to clarify it. Does, does the bold clarify it? Because we never really finished that part, I guess. It does if we're going for it.
I think it might be better, um, the bold part where it says as defined in this policy below. Could we just leave it as as defined in this policy?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Alright, so we have two agreeing to put it in there. Do we have a third? Okay, Robinson is fine with it. That makes three, so we have a majority consent to add that. To the, to the draft, director.
I would just comment that since you're talking about non-adult collections, you're including teen and young adults. And, um, again, they do have First Amendment rights. And the definition that you have for sexual conduct means an act of masturbation, homosexuality, sexual intercourse. Uh, that all of that kind of information, and so I'm not sure that it would pass a legal review. Um, and so I'll just make that comment and allow Colton or legal counsel to give feedback to the board.
Okay, I I thought that those items were in Idaho statutes. Trustee Blanks.
So, yes, I I think that's certainly in that statute. Um, so take out. What we'd already crossed out, I guess. And we've already agreed to take out the below, so now. Is this what we're deciding on? What it's written there.
ADA, ADA, I'd recommend that it be read aloud. Okay, uh, protecting minors from explicit and potentially developmentally. Developmentally damaging sexual content is a serious consideration for the entire community, library, board and staff. No graphic visual or written depictions of sexual conduct as defined in this policy will be included in the CLN non-adult collection. Age-appropriate materials concerning biology, human anatomy or religion are exempt from this directive. Okay, so that is what we have majority consent on?
Very good.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. So, yes, we have majority consent on that. Uh, trustee Blanks.
I'm trying to remember where it was, um. Each. Read. It was the other policy. Didn't we go back through and. List out the teen, youth and. Young adults as opposed to same non-adult, because there was. Something that wasn't, you know, the yoga hands or something wasn't non-adult also. So there was something really.
Uh, yeah, I think we did make that change, but yeah, perhaps it was the, the other one. Okay, um, so. Uh, just to. Uh, yeah, we just have a couple more minutes, um, and then I'll go to break. Um, so on page one, there's that other red sentence regardless if previously acquired. On a except for material that has been lost or damaged. Yeah, discussion on that.
Now, what does it mean?
Trustee Blanks.
Um, I didn't want to put that in there myself. It was suggested be added, but, um. I don't think we should be buying material and violate this policy.
I can explain.
That's why I don't want the, the, that bracketed sentence in there.
Okay, so the entire thing you don't want? Okay.
The, the bracketed part.
Okay, uh, trustee Blake, did you still have a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to know what it meant, so if there is a. I I, I have this general question that I asked at the last meeting. Can a acquisition policy be more restrictive than the law itself? And if it, if so, is that censorship? And if a book is on the shelf and can't be taken off, but somebody walks off with it or it gets hurt, you know, damaged. Um, then does this policy mean that we can't put that book back on the shelf? Is that what you're saying? And if so, do we not set ourselves up very vulnerable? Are we not becoming, setting ourselves up to be very legally vulnerable?
Uh, trustee Hamlin.
I believe I'm the person that wrote that, and what I'm saying in there, and I think it's rather clear, but. Regardless of previous, so basically the policy applies to everything that's being acquired. Uh, inclu- and and saying that even if you acquired something, which was, oh, say, a rare possibility, somewhere was inappropriate in the past. You, given this new policy, you can't buy it again unless the material was lost or damaged. And the reason I wrote that in here is I didn't want there to be any open door where. Uh, some activist decides we don't like these books, they check them out and never bring them back, or they damage them, and then. The library is not allowed to replace them, so I see it as a way of keeping us, and I think we shouldn't beat this to death. I think, I don't mean by you, but I mean, it's like. We're keeping ourselves from having the public, in my opinion, take a book off the shelf and get rid of it, and then. Keeping us, and and this keeps us from being restricted. We can go ahead and purchase that book again. So that's, that's the way it's written up. Ask why I wrote it. So it's basically saying it's okay to violate our policy. To purchase a book again if it doesn't come back to the library or it's damaged and we can make believe maybe intentionally. So I want, I want the library to be able to purchase a book again.
Uh, yeah, I I understand that, but on the other hand, it it doesn't seem right that we should be purchasing. Materials that violate the, the policy. Um, and I, trustee Blanks?
Well, one clarification is in the sentence, this sentence can't be taken as is, the first part before the. It's either before the. Or, uh. Comma or after the comma. Just we have to take one of the two, you can't take both. Um, I think if the library staff is worried about a particular book that we have that violates this policy. They can put it on restricted loan out, they can keep people from taking it, they can have it. Where, like I've said before, at Gonzaga, fourth floor library, rare books, they don't let people just. Take the book out from fourteen hundred, you have to, you can look at it there. Anyway, they can put policies in to protect the book. So I I don't see any reason to buy the book again ever if it violates this policy.
Uh, trustee Hamlin.
I think I just have one follow-up comment. If I understood the library director's comment thirty months ago. Approximately twenty percent of the books that are purchased on a given month are. Repeat purchases of books we already have. are repeat purchases of books we already have. And so and again, what I see here is if the book is appropriate, fine, if it's being repurchased, and if the book's not, then we shouldn't be buying more of them. But the books are being purchased because they've been destroyed or not brought back. Then I don't think we should open ourselves up. It's just we're we're killing a lot of time over one, I think, unnecessary. I think it's necessary to leave it in there. And if someone wants to take it out of there and it gets voted above me, that's fine. I'll I'll let it go. I'll stay or I'll show up. Say no. So that's why it's in there. That's the only reason why.
Okay, so we have Hallie for leaving it in there. Do we have any others for leaving it in there? The red section?
Or after the comma or before the comma? You can't have them both.
The red.
Alright, so.
Regardless, the first part before the comma was there originally.
Oh, okay.
And it was suggested to replace that with the second part after the comma.
Okay, so the question right now is except for material that has been lost or damaged. That's the only question?
Well, I guess maybe it isn't. Maybe it's a clarification of the regardless. But I don't know why the regardless is there.
I don't think he wrote that, maybe. I do remember writing about loss or damage, making an exception for that. I don't know if I'm going to rest it as sentence.
Well, was there originally regardless of previously acquired? Was there originally?
Um, alright, so regardless of previously acquired was already there. Um, so now the question is whether we're adding except for material that has been lost or damaged. So Hallie wants that portion of the red in there. Does anyone else want it in there?
If it protects books, if it protects books, it should be on the shelf, yes.
Okay, so Blank is a yes. Any any other guesses to keep that except for material that has been lost or damaged? Okay, it sounds like we only have two that want it in there. So we do not have consensus and it is taken out since it was really only there as a ghost in the first place. Uh, so so it will read this portion or this policy pertains only to the selection of new acquisitions of books and materials regardless of previously acquired for the library's collection, not removal of existing micro materials. Um, that's what that sentence now says.
So now we've opened it up.
Alright.
Wait a minute, I I thought you were talking about the entire red section there. So now it's just regardless of previously required. That way, somebody could, as much as he said nefariously, go in there and purposefully damage a book. I thought you were talking about getting rid of the entire sentence.
Uh, yeah, that is what I thought it was originally. It's done. It was established that regardless of previously acquired is already in there, and we were just talking about the question of except for material that has been lost.
Okay, that brings up, I mean, that's a completely different, because I was looking by the entire red section.
Okay, so then are you speaking out?
I would say either get rid of all of it or keep all of it. Because regardless if previously acquired, like trustees, maybe maybe everybody's not clear on what this is. Can you re-ask in in that, make sure everybody knows that except for materials that have been lost or damaged is out of there, but it's still regardless of previously acquired stays in? Does everybody still have the same opinion on that sentence?
Okay, so yeah, so, okay, so they wanted to keep the whole sentence sense too.
The entire, the entire red.
Entire red portion.
Okay, if regardless of previously acquired is going to be there, then I am definitely for the entire sentence to be there.
Okay, so then we have a change of consensus. And now
I apologize.
We have three people who want to keep the entire red sentence in there. Um, and that will include uh, go ahead, trustee.
Is there a reason why we can't continue this policy? We're thirty minutes ahead of schedule, and this is a beast. And it needs to be finished before implementation of the law, meaning it goes affectment. So I'm not sure when we're potentially here, going to take a break and just drop it at this point when we have the ability to beat on it for another twenty-five minutes and maybe finish it.
Uh, well, we did, uh, we did take an extra fifteen minutes on this and said I would like to take the other extra time that we have for the withdrawal policy.
That's the chair's priority.
This doesn't make any sense to have the whole sentence. It was, you can't say for all books buying regardless of previously acquired except for loss.
Um, okay, but that's what the majority said, so and we could potentially fix it later. Um, but we do, we have had majority consent to keep the entire red sentence in there. So now we are continuing uh, the material selection and acquisition policy section, and we are going on a fifteen minute break. Right, it is three fifty, and this meeting will come back to order after the break. Our next section is discussion of materials withdrawal and reconsideration policy. One thing that I noticed in the draft was that it had proportions of eighteen, fifteen, fourteen, but I think it needs to have the entire thing in there.
It's the definitions of laws. Just the definition of harmful to minors is what it says.
And it only needs to be on the form.
And I don't think it has to define minor, and I don't think it has to define material, but I put those in.
Oh, I can tell you, I got the, I got the.
Trustee Floss?
And Hallie too.
Hallie, geez, I did it again, two, three. Sorry.
No, if if we're asking about what, as a fact of the House Bill seven ten, one of the last paragraphs near the end, it's line number thirty-seven, it says public libraries shall have readily accessible form, and then goes in such form shall the form not contain a definition of harmful to minors as provided in section eighteen, fifteen, fourteen. That's that's all that I've read in it required to have in it.
But it doesn't actually say materials.
Trustee Floss?
And it doesn't actually, it's not yet, it doesn't say materials, and it doesn't say.
That says, okay, I'll read.
Doesn't say material I put in is number seven.
If the chair wants to be smart.
It doesn't say minor. It doesn't need number one as a definition of minor.
Okay, trustee Hallie?
I'll just read what it says down there. It's just very small, line thirty-seven within that. HB seven ten, each school and public library shall have a readily accessible form allowing a person to review, I mean, to request review of material the person considers to be harmful to minors. Such forms shall contain a definition of, in quotes, harmful to minors, end quote, as provided in sections eighteen, fifteen, fourteen of Idaho code. That's all it says. It answers the question.
Okay. I said correctly. Uh, trustee Hallie?
Are we on the policy right now, first, and then the form second, or where where are we? So I know how to participate.
Um, yeah, that would that would make sense, just to do the the policy first. Trustee Hallie?
Okay, uh, I reviewed it, and I would suggest, um, the orange add-on text in there be taken out of the policy. Uh, it's not required, and I don't see, we don't, we don't put the rest of the other policies. I mean, of the other Idaho codes, eighteen, fifteen, thirteen, eighteen, fifteen, fourteen, eighteen, fifteen, fifteen. So I see no need to put eighteen, fifteen, fourteen in there. It's it's we we're only going to be part of half some verbiage in the on the actual, you know, that will make this policy considerably shorter. That's my initial discussion on this policy.
Uh, trustee Floss?
You you mean on the first page and the top of the second page? Just that, yeah, and I I'd agree. I put that in not knowing if it was needed by the process, but I I really don't believe that. The latest part, reconsideration of material is to replace existing black, the consideration of material. That, that I think we need to have, it explains the, uh, reprocess.
Uh, trustee Hallie?
So do we do we have to get agreement from a majority that we drop? The verbiage on page five or page one, copy to?
Uh, yes, that would be an idea. Um, so trustee Floss, someone you wanted to take it out, trustee Hallie wanted to take it out. I'm good with taking it out. Um, doesn't need to be in there. So we have majority consent. Um, but did anyone else have anything to say about? That paragraph or that? Director?
I was able to, uh, review the current draft of the policy for Boise Public Library. They did choose to include some definitions, uh, that I would recommend that the board put in or consider putting in. Their definitions include what the library board is and what statute they have authority. They define material as in section eighteen dash one, five, four, seven, meaning anything tangible which is harmful to minors, and and it goes further, and you have that in your table packet. Um, they do define, um, harmful material, harmful to minors. Um, and then they define per purring interest, and then what a request for reconsideration of materials is, and written notice. And so I'm going to say these stood out to me and were included in your copy of key language of your consideration. These appear to be, um, included in the policy for legal reasons. And so I'd recommend that the board consider them or talk to legal counsel about the benefit of adding those.
Okay, thank you. Um, alright, so did I specifically announce that we did have a majority consent to remove, uh, the red section at the bottom of page one and bottom of page two, if I didn't before? You're in it now. So.
Just this part here.
I think so. Uh, trust Robinson?
The director just mentioned a table packet. I all I have, I believe, was the audit report. Was there something else that I should have?
It was what I emailed.
Was that today?
Yeah, it appeared yesterday.
Yesterday.
Oh, okay. Oh, so so what part of this is?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's about halfway through.
Oh. It looks like this. It starts with he language.
So this talks about harmful to minors and and, um, as I said, Boise Public put material harmful to minors, and I'll just read this section. As defined in Idaho Code eighteen dash one, five, one, four, six. And then they also added in red in conjunction with U.S. Supreme Court case law means material that contains, and then it goes on and on. Um, and so they do um, put a definition in their withdrawal policy, um, that has a little bit more of an interpretation right together.
Trustee Floss?
Um, I guess I view that as an alternate policy that I think it's a diversion now. If we just concentrate on the one and move it to the other one, I suppose, concentrate on the one that we have in our packet.
Yeah, and we can read through the other, and if there's something in there that we particularly like, we can ask to uh, add that to the item that we're going on. Uh, trustee Floss?
And another thing I'd said on the previous policy is I I tend to like to we we had two different names for the definitions, and I'd like to make this definition match Idaho code. So let's say materials harmful to minors here, and then take materials inappropriate for minors and put it into the other policy. So then we don't have contradicting words. The other policy doesn't have this Idaho code. So I guess I'd like this name to match the Idaho code, which is called harmful to minors. That would be a suggestion. Change inappropriate to minors to harmful.
Ever set up? Okay, so the part that says on page one, materials inappropriate for minors, you want to change that to materials harmful to minors?
Yeah, to match, yeah.
I'm good with that.
That makes sense to me.
But we have to change the other one, because the other one had we had two different names, because they were a little different, different definitions. I have to remember that.
Uh, Director, you have something to say?
I just was going to reiterate that you should probably define material as it's defined in the Idaho code. And then, yes, use the term material harmful to minors rather than materials. I also think in some part of this beginning, you need to add the legislation and the name of the act and the policy.
Floss?
I I don't think we need, we've got Idaho codes written right there. I don't know why we need to put the name. It didn't used to be the name in there, so I'm fine with just keeping it, the Idaho codes. This is where we listed instead of saying non-adult, we listed juvenile teen and young adult collections. Because that that's the part where we were having discussion last meeting. We left something, and I'll say non-adult.
Um, so the beginning of that same sentence, so under the page one, materials, well, okay, so we did have a majority consent, Hallie, Floss, and Audison to change uh, materials inappropriate for minors to materials harmful to minors. But that first sentence where it says notwithstanding Idaho Code eighteen, fifteen, seventeen, I requested to have that put in there before, uh, there was a new law. So I'm thinking that that version is no longer relevant. And should probably be taken. Uh, trustee Floss?
And and that's because D is where the, uh, legal also word exemption, but, uh, was given to.
Affirmative defense?
Defense was given to libraries, and that's not in there anymore.
Right.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Take that.
Okay.
All of that out before materials.
So the notwithstanding Idaho Code eighteen, fifteen, seventeen, D, um, that we have. And here, was that?
I can click that.
Yes, take it out?
That that was where the legal defense was put in, yes, and I I agree, take it out.
Okay, so we have, uh, majority consent to take out notwithstanding Idaho Code eighteen, fifteen, seventeen, D.
Oh, do you have a question on that?
Yep.
This, the new law, is it actually take Idaho Code eighteen, fifteen, seventeen, D away? I mean, is that no longer part of the Idaho code?
Uh, section G there was the affirmative defense that said that libraries could have the stuff in the minor sections, and they removed the affirmative events.
They did.
Yeah, so, um, yeah.
The like either, it's different.
And Director?
So again, um, House Bill seven, ten, which established Idaho Code eighteen dash fifteen, seventeen, B, as in boy, refers to itself as the Children's School and Protection Act. So again, it also talks about an area not accessible to minors. So you need to be consistent. You're now talking about the harmful to minors in this policy. So you need to include the updated code citation. And it's not enough to say that it won't be in those collections. It needs to be, you you need to articulate more clearly.
I do.
Um, so it does say materials that violate Idaho Codes eighteen, fifteen, thirteen, eighteen, fifteen, fourteen, and eighteen, fifteen, fifteen shall be removed. from the juvenile teen and young adult collections. Is that what you're referring to?
Sure.
Oh, sorry, trustee boss?
We, we also, further down, we need to match the definitions of where we were calling it inappropriate for minors to match the heading. We need to call it harmful to minors, I think, to match. We've got the same on those last two bullet points should match, but I don't, sort of the heading.
And what, what page is that?
That's page two, the middle where it's, it's got four bullet disposition of material.
Okay.
That just, it's, we were using the same, we were using the same term as the title on the first page of that section. We need to have a match.
Okay, so the third and fourth bullet point, they're on page two.
Yeah.
Change that to if material is harmful to minors or harmful to minors?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so do we have a majority consent to change bullet number three or bullet points number three and four to say if material is harmful to minors instead of if material is inappropriate for minors?
Yes.
Okay, so Haley's yes, plus you suggested I'm assuming her yes. Uh, I, director?
I'm just not sure it's clear what the process is because you don't talk about that until later in the policy.
Sure.
Trustee boss?
Yeah, later in the policy is for the reconsideration for when people put in a form. This is pretty clear in the policy that you don't put material harmful to minors that's produced for adults in the adult collection. And material inappropriate or harmful to minors not produced, removed to another location. I, I think we say it, it's pretty clear in disposition of materials.
Director?
So you're talking about the weeding process of relocation and disposition, which is typically handled by staff. And now you're talking about, I, I, I'm reading it as you're having staff determine what is harmful to minors rather than the process of a reconsideration form. So you're telling us that it's staff in the weeding process. So you're not talking about a policy level decision or a selection decision. You're talking about a, removing an item, and you're talking about putting it in a harmful to minors exempt or area, if you will.
Trustee boss?
Yeah, yeah, the staff should take first shot at it. They should put these in the right places. And it, it's up to the staff to put the material on the right shelves. If something is overlooked, then I'm all for making it easy for any citizen to say, ah, you missed one, look at this. And do the form, a simple form to say you missed one, and we can look at it, and that's the reconsideration. But the staff should take first shot at it here with the disposition of materials.
Uh, trustee Robinson?
I think that the subjective nature of deciding, um, staff deciding where the book should go in the first place. I think they already do do that. And they do it well. It, then it's incumbent on a citizen to challenge. And that's when staff would relook at the policy and to see if that book is actually in the right spot or not. So I don't know about, um. I think that the staff already does put the book where they think it should go, if that makes sense. And then, yeah, uh, then the reconsideration, um. Request for reconsideration is when a citizen can actually say, hey, I think it goes somewhere else. And then that's when it's looked at, and then that's when the policy is followed.
Trustee Haley?
A just quick one, does it just need to have, or assess material which has been selected for removal from the collection during the weeding and or reconsideration process? And then it follows these steps? I'm not sure if that fits that there properly or not.
Trustee boss?
Well, the reconsideration is the next section, so I don't think you need to refer to it. Although I guess it's about disposition. Maybe it should be both.
Director?
I interpret the trustee's comment as asking government staff to discriminate on materials based on content and viewpoint. There is a process that is outlined in a reconsideration. So what this is describing is that one staff person purchased a material. I've already said I do not believe that we have any materials in our collection that meet the legal definition of harmful to minors. And now you're telling staff who are withdrawing materials and removing them from the collection that you want that based on whether or not they determine that it's harmful to minors. Again, there is strong First Amendment protections of all materials that the library has. And, and the withdrawal policy has an even heightened standard as legal counsel has told us.
Trustee boss?
So we don't have a policy called disposition of materials in this policy. There, this is not saying you're withdrawing it from the library. Um, that's certainly part of a choice of disposition. But the staff should be putting it in the right place. And this, we're just clarifying here, if it's harmful to minors, but the characters, um. Basically, if it's an adult book, the characters are adult, it shouldn't be in the minor section, and it should be in the adult section. If the second one here is if it's not produced for adults, if it's, the characters are teenagers or younger. It's not an adult book. It's produced for minors, and it shouldn't go into the adult section. That's all they're saying. And we're not saying to decide content based or whatever, but to get, get it out of the library. We're just saying, put it, please, put it in the right place. And then citizens can come along with the form on the next section and have a process to have it reviewed.
Director?
I think it's really important that we understand that the reconsideration of material is a board decision. It gets appealed and goes through harmful to minors to the board. So now you're mixing disposition of materials, which staff do. Again, weeding is not something that the board does. That's a functional or operational activity. So again, clearly separate and distinguish the role of staff and what you are asking staff to do in a policy and what the role and the responsibility of the board is. So disposition of materials, we recycle it, we chuck it in the dumpster about that. That's much more in line with how this weeding process, or we donated to the friends to resell it. Those are, those are what staff do in terms of disposition of materials.
Trustee boss?
Oh, I don't know where this should go. Um, we don't have a policy on where the staff puts books. But we're saying, please, put it in the right place. This, it is, if it's harmful to minors, and we gave the definition, it shouldn't be in the minor section, but put it in the right place. And I don't think we need to rely on the citizens to go tell us this. We should make our best effort to do it right ourselves and staff. And if we overlook something, people have this last section doing reconsideration. But this, this is not out of line for staff to do. Please put it in the right place.
And it's just, it's an option for them. Um, anyway, director?
So in a selection policy, there's all kinds of language like age appropriate. There's all kinds of direction that this board is giving staff for where to properly locate materials. This policy is called materials withdrawal and reconsideration. So there's no place in this policy for staff to determine other than it's in the collection, it's out of the collection. Or the board is now telling us that there's this process for the community and citizens to get feedback. The place for that language of appropriate or guidance to staff would be in the selection policy. The only things that are appropriate for disposition would be if you want us to recycle it, if you want it, if you're okay with it being donated and the proceeds benefiting the library. There, it is not appropriate to ask or direct staff to do a harmful to minors, which is a community standard. Again, staff are government, actors of government, and they have to follow a process. And that is why the reconsideration, the citizens' appeal of what our decisions have been. It is completely inappropriate to ask staff to make that determination.
Okay, trustee boss?
So I, I, I don't agree. The staff should make a best effort of doing it first. The selection policy is selection and acquisition. It's what books do we buy? It is, we don't have anything in there about where, what shelf to put them on. That's what needs to go into the minors card policy. We need definition there. And we've got a lot of work to do on it, but the selections is just about what to buy. And it's not telling which shelf. So this one is, is not at all unreasonable to ask the staff to put, please, put them in the right section. And then if citizens find disagree, then there's a process for them to make a claim.
Yeah, it, it seems like the law is to protect children and holding libraries accountable. I'm not sure why there's a problem with the libraries taking care of a problem that's in the library already. Uh, director?
So protected speech is not illegitimately restricted. That's the purpose. So I think, again, we need to go back to obscenity is not protected speech, and neither is materials harmful to minors, which is a subset of obscenity. Again, if materials do not meet one of those very clearly defined definitions or categories of unprotected speech, then they are protected by the First Amendment. So again, you're just put the book, have the staff do this. Again, you are talking about government actors taking protected speech and inappropriately and illegitimately restricting it. So again, I really think that legal counsel needs to weigh in. I really feel like this board does not have a grasp or understanding of what they're talking about when it comes to restricting free speech.
Uh, trustee boss?
So this policy is about the Idaho, or how they implement the Idaho code that was just passed or updated. And this is simply saying, the change of wording, material that meets that definition of the Idaho code that we referred to in the previous section does not go in minors. So all we're doing is asking you to, if some, if a book meets this definition that's in the code, don't put it in the minor section, and, and it's just giving you direction where to put it. So why is that a problem? If it meet, if it meets the definition of Idaho code, then, you know, it shouldn't be in the minor section. And are you suggesting you could break the law just because you can't decide what definition is or something?
Uh, director?
The materials that meet obscenity or the Idaho definition of harmful to minors, material harmful to minors is very clear. And this library district does not have any materials that meet that legal definition. So the point of telling us in a withdrawal policy to take the material and move it, that doesn't make any sense.
Um, you had just said that a few minutes ago that it was according harmful to minors according to community standards. And there's a lot of people in our community who vehemently disagree with what you just said. Uh, trustee boss?
I, this doesn't say anything obscenity. It, it actually uses the word in the Idaho law. If it meets the definition harmful to minors in Idaho law, that we did have in this policy. And that is what we're saying. We're harmful to minors, and we said it up here. What materials harmful to minors is, it's what violates that snow. If it, if it meets that definition, it needs to get moved. If we don't have such a book, then this is no problem. But the staff needs to make sure it's not in the minor section because the Idaho law says it, and that's all we're saying. We're just giving extra direction. Don't put it, don't put everything in the adult section if it's really not written for adults.
Oh, director, sorry.
Again, the material harmful to minors has to appeal to the period interest of minors as judged by an average person applying contemporary community standards. It has to depict or describe nudity, sexual conduct, sexual excitement, or semi-miscatic abuse that is patently offensive to the prevailing community standards with respect to what is suitable material for minors, including patently offensive representations or depictions of intimate sexual acts, normal or, and I'm just going to go on. If that is what you're talking about, then you have not included that in this policy. Because this is material harmful. And so you're asking staff then to what? Determine that they're the community standard and that, again, it's taken as a whole and that it appeals to the period interest. So I just want to be clear what you're asking staff to do. And again, it's the board's job. It's the community's job when it talks about withdrawing materials, which is protected speech.
I don't think he's talked about protected speech, though. The law just removed our affirmative defense, so it's not protected. Anyway, uh, trustee Haley?
I was going to say when a book is challenged or put up for reconsideration by a, a person, it isn't the board's job first. It's the staff's job first to take that into consideration, review the book, and make a decision. And then we decide, yes, this book is inappropriate, is harmful to minors. Or they need, they need some kind of, what are they supposed to do with it? That's the answer right there, I think. It's the board's job then, if the staff decides to do nothing, meaning they decide this book is acceptable, is not harmful to minors, that it lands in the lap of the board. Uh, that's, that's my understanding of this process.
Trustee boss?
I, I don't see what the objection is. If you're trying to get away, to have the staff get away from having to follow the new Idaho code, I don't know how you're going to do that because it's code now. But this is just consistent with it. We, in the policy, we say materials harmful to minors. We say that it's in this code, and it has to be removed from all of these sections, which is what the law says. And then saying where it needs to go by Harvard decision, the decision is made. But if you can't follow the Idaho code with this definition you just read, then staff's got some problems because the board shouldn't be coming in and deciding this. This is the staff to implement this. So this policy is just saying, follow Idaho code, follow the Idaho definition for harmful to minors, and put the books in the right place.
Uh, trustee Haley?
If I'm following the whole conversation correctly, I suggest we leave the whole paragraph disposition of, disposition of materials. the whole paragraph disposition of, disposition of materials as is with the exception of changing inappropriate and change that to harmful and move on.
Mr. Robinson?
I was gonna suggest if, if it would make a, a difference and make people happier if either all of the disposition of materials or those two bullet points that are being talked about were moved after reconsider, reconsideration of materials. Because when, when somebody feels that out, it doesn't necessarily mean the book's gonna be kicked out of the library, but put on a different shelf. Is that correct? So is that correct? Uh, if if a, if a request for reconsideration is found to be, yes, they're right, it shouldn't be four, zero, twelve. It doesn't make, it's not necessarily going to be out of the library, but maybe placed in a different section. Is that correct?
Um, my understanding is the board has the authority to remove the item from the library's collection or to place it in an adult's only accessible space.
Okay, thank you. So possibly those two bullet points could be incorporated into the next section, reconsideration of materials. What would, in fact, it might even be in there of what happens to the book if it's bound to be in the wrong spot or not supposed to be in the library in the first place.
Uh, trustee Fox?
Uh, I, I'm opposed to that because this is, the disposition of materials is for the staff. This is a direction to the staff. They got the weeding process and they also need to make decisions on this material. It, this, this is totally to the staff to try to make a first effort uh, to put them on the right place. So I, I don't want to move it down to reconsideration on it. Because reconsideration should be a very small, rare find of a book. And I, I want it to be easy, just a couple of questions. Somebody says, hey, I think you missed one. Oh, really? Please help us out. And we look it up. Oh, sorry, we didn't miss one. I want it to be easy for someone. I want the library to be squeaky clean on adhering to the Idaho statutes.
Uh, without objection, assistant director?
Um, so trustee earlier said something about library staff not wanting to follow Idaho code. And I think that is a mischaracterization of what's going on here. Of course, we're going to follow Idaho code. We have and we always will. Um, the other part of this is, I think there's like a base misunderstanding of when materials are purchased and when they're selected, that is when and where we decide where they go in the collection. We don't do that at this point. So that's, I think, if I'm understanding what you're saying, it's like we make those decisions at the point of purchase. We don't make those decisions during the disposition. When this policy, it's like we weed something and then we dispose of it. And disposing of it does not include relocating. Like that is under the reconsideration process, not under the disposition process. And I don't know, like, I feel like we're just ramming ahead like this because I don't know how to get beyond this point because there's like library understanding that is not there. Um, and there's like an unwillingness to understand or even hear the way we do our library work might be different from your understanding of how you think we do our library work.
Uh, trustee Fox?
So because of this situation, the library needs to change maybe how they're doing things. If they decided five years ago to put these books on a shelf, they can't put their blinders on and say, we're not going to look at this until we do reconsideration about removing the book. They better get with it and make sure reconsider where they put the books, make sure that they're okay. So it can't be left just to, the selection and acquisition is purchase. I have said over many times that the library card or minor policy needs to be reworked and definitions of what goes in each section needs to be added. And that's where I think there should be a lot of definition of the different levels. But the selection is just, you know, the person doing the purchasing, what are they gonna buy? And I don't think that's the time for the library to think about, the only time for the library to think about what shelf to put it on. If there are things that violate the Idaho law, they better on their own reconsider it and not wait for a citizen to bring it up. Uh, there may be legal action if a citizen brings it up. So reconsider it as you go along. And I think the way the library does its, its work needs to change to handle uh, if these books are in the wrong section.
Mr. Robinson?
First, before I forget, there wouldn't be legal consequences because if somebody brings it up, that's when it goes through the process of them bringing it up and you got like 30 days to rectify it. Uh, I had raised my hand at the same time the assistant director did. And I'm glad you went to her, especially because she verbalized exactly what I was trying to get out of my brain. Uh, selection policy isn't just buying books. Selection policy is bringing the books into the library and putting them on the shelves that they are supposed to go on. And of course, the librarians are mindful of where they go. First off, I think it probably tells them where it's supposed to go. But there's certain things on their radar that they also put into place of where a book should be shelved. Uh, again, what the assistant director said, I think, is what I was going to try to say, but not say it as clear. Uh, the weeding, which has been explained to the board in the past, has been blurred again. Weeding is not re-shelving. Um, if anything, this could be moved into reconsideration of materials of what happens to the book after that. But I'm fully on board with uh, taking those two out because they don't belong there. And it's absolutely the selection policy that dictates and and I have trust in our, our staff. I have trust that they're not going to, oh, they're just buying books. They're just buying them. And then they go wherever they land, they land, yeah, it doesn't matter to us. They are professionals, they're doing their job, and that's where they do it, is in the selection policy. That's where, that's where they decide where they get shelved. And yes, it is up to the citizens to find one and think, wow, maybe this shouldn't be on the shelf. But it's not because a evil employee decided to put it there. It's everything, everything is subjective, even, even though there's all these wonderful um, some Idaho code, some um, definitions from another state. They're still subjective. They still are. One person, one person thinks bathhouse is fine, another person doesn't.
Okay, so I'll have to go back and listen to your comments when the video comes out so I can more fully consider them. Um, but the intent of the law is to protect children and make libraries a safe place. And I don't see why there's a problem with, you know, the citizens doing their part and the library also doing its part to make libraries a safe place. Um, so that families and, and kids and trust going into the library and not being harmed. Um, so trustee Henry was next. Not really.
I think, well, mine was up for a while when you last even, then it went down while you were speaking and I have to go back up. There are books that were successfully challenged in the past, not that far along the way. I'm sure there are some books that are possibly in libraries that will violate Idaho code, possibly. And then whether it's intentional or unintentional, some books will get in and be successfully or have a reason to be challenged. So I'm wondering if we could just strictly write this instead of making it look like we're focused on the weeding process. Is material which has been selected for removal or relocation from the collection during any review process will be relocated or disposed of using the following options. I think that's kind of neutral. We're not focused on the weeding process because that is, I think, a disposal process. And I think this whole paragraph got put in there, I think I wrote that one once before we ever heard of HB 710. Because nothing said where the books go in the library, once they're, whether they're weeded or however they get rid of a book, nothing says where they go. So they could all go home to the library director or a library manager or anyone on the street that says, hey, I'll take all your latest donations. So I thought there should be a place that says where we get rid of our, our materials. And that's why I wrote that initially. Again, it long preceded HB 710. So I, I kind of tend to think that it would be neutral and applied anytime you find a book that's or a material. If you say material's been selected for removal or relocation, that will probably be during the most likely reconsideration process from the library during any review process will be relocated or disposed of. I think that's kind of neutral. We're not focusing on a particular reason why we're reviewing that book, meaning during the weeding process reconsideration. So I think that that's maybe less contentious and it should apply anytime a book is reviewed or a piece of material.
Uh, did you, okay, director?
I just had a, kind of a question of, um, direction and clarification. So my understanding is that this board has one more meeting on June 20th. And so my expectation at the end of this meeting is that we will have both a reconsideration withdrawal policy and, and I guess I heard that the board expects to have a selection policy finalized so that it can be reviewed by legal counsel and ready to be adopted at the June 20th meeting.
Um, are you good?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's my understanding is that's what you're gonna have completed today and the next.
Uh, I'm not seeing that happening at this meeting. Um, I think that we will uh, maybe tack on some time to the budget meetings. Or have another special meeting. Rather not do that, but if it's necessary, it's necessary.
So my understanding is we have one regular meeting and we have a special meeting. It's already scheduled for this one. And then next month, we have a regular meeting and a special meeting for training and a special meeting for leaded. So I'm just gonna suggest that this free for all forum may not be as productive and that perhaps the board would like to consider a committee to bring back a proposed version or some alternative solution in working. Uh, I think a tremendous amount of time was spent talking about disposition and the reality is reconsideration and a forum is what needed to be done.
Uh, that committee might be a good idea. Um, next. Uh, trustee Fox?
The, the committee is not an option at this point, the way it was done last time. So I, we have to make the decision. We just have to finish what's left here. Uh, because we're still gonna, if a committee spends time doing something, we're still gonna have to come back and go through all these things. So we're very close and uh, I'd like to, I can accept this. Is this, is this correct what I put in here of the changes? And I, if we can get a consensus to accept that and accept the rest of the paragraph and move on.
Is that what you had said?
We're just gonna say I'll have as many special meetings as necessary with the whole board to get this doggone thing done. We've been kicking around for 12, 10 months. I don't want to start a new one. I don't want some subcommittee, whether I'm included or not, necessarily, committee rather. I, we, we, we work this as a whole. I think we're getting close. I don't want special meetings, but I'll sit here till 10 o'clock at night if necessary to get this thing done. I'm not proposing on a separate tonight. I want to finish it. I want to deliver on it. And we have a short timeline to get it done. And I don't think it's gonna mix well with budget discussions.
This is right. That's we, that, that's, I believe what I indicated, yes.
And so I'm good with it. Uh, I'm, 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 okay.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, and yes, okay, so we have a majority consensus to change it as it is written up there. Material which has been selected for removal or relocation during the section during the review process will be relocated or disposed of using the following options. Um, and it looks like the fourth bullet point, okay, there it is. Uh, director?
It's not clear to me what is intended when you're saying harmful to minors and move to adult collection area. My understanding is that it has to be non-accessible. So you're talking about more than just the adult area. You're talking about a non-accessible area.
Okay.
My recommendation in this section under disposition would just be to remove those two bullet points at the bottom and leave it at disposal of the materials or donate to a friends group. I believe that the board can give direction in the reconsideration process of what they intend to do, which is to eliminate the item from the collection or to move it into an area. I do not believe that mixing staff direction with board action is appropriate. This still comes too close to censoring to me.
Okay, uh, trustee Fox?
But no one's censoring. We already have the book. The harmful to minors in the last two bullet points is the same materials harmful to minor defined up there, which is defined in Idaho code. I don't think we need to list it again. And if it violates that definition, it needs to get moved and staff should do it first. If they have overlooked something, please go ahead and do it and make it right for the community. That's all we're saying. It's not, I don't want to remove it. It needs to be in here. It needs to be very clear that we want this to follow Idaho harmful to minors law and get it out of the minors area.
So I'm gonna just tell you the answer. If you can scroll back. It needs to say if material to, is harmful to minors but produced for adults, move to the non-accessible adult only collection. That is what makes it compliant with the law. This is, again, censorship and not compliant with the law.
Trustee Henry?
I'm sure that there are many books in the adult section that would be considered harmful to minors. If the book was written for adults and somehow landed in a minors area, then it would be appropriate to put it into the adult area. And I wrote, I remember writing that in that last bullet when I said if it was written for a minor, then you make it available, let me see, I wrote it in there. And it's to go into a collection area, not acceptable minors. Anyway, that was, that was left at the discretion then of the library because there are gonna be facility challenges. You're gonna have a small library like Pinehurst or Harrison. I don't want to tell you where to put it. What I would say, but it was a suggestion was they send it to a larger library. And if somebody down there wants it in another libraries, they can ask for it. It's available, but it's not sitting on the shelves. So I wrote that, believe it's up to the discretion of the staff to figure out where is appropriate to keep it out of the hands of minors. But, and, and we'll, we'll meet. We're not gonna move the entire adult collection to some area not available to minors, it's my understanding. So if we take a book that was landed in the minors, every some reason it gets challenged because and it's appropriate and belongs in an adult section, it goes to adult section. If it's written for minors, it doesn't go to adult section. There's no reason to litter that with a bunch of kids' books. And you put that somewhere unavailable to minors. So my response.
Uh, director?
I would just recommend moving past this point and leaving legal counsel to give you an opinion. I've stated mine, I think, as much as I can. And I think it'll ultimately come down to legal's opinion.
Trustee Fox?
Yeah, so this, this is not violating Idaho law. It's Idaho law does say move it to adult section, but if, if you want to put it in another section, I don't know why. It, it, Idaho law says move it out of the, the minor section. So I, I don't think putting it in someplace or moving it to another library is a violation of Idaho law.
Okay, um, so I think that we'll have more time to discuss this at the end. I mean, want to make sure and leave time for other items just in case. Um, so what I'm going to do is move to table this discussion, uh, which means you put it on the table, means you can take that up later in the same meeting. So it has been moved to the table of this discussion. I'll, uh, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of table?
Um, I'll just, we have, the board had requested that I draft a reconsideration of materials forum and I did so.
Yes, thank you. Oh, actually, and I, I meant to mention how I was apart. Oh, I liked that you had three different ways that people could submit their, uh, their reconsideration um, forms. Um, that was, I like that. Anyway, one of them was electronic, so. Anyway, okay, so all those in favor of tabling this discussion? I, I, uh, I'm an I, uh, they opposed. Okay, uh, so the motion is carried and this discussion is tabled. All right, so the next thing is to discuss public comment policy. We said that to legal and he is not here to give us his assessment, so I'm thinking that we just go ahead and move on to the next item. So, did you have comment on that?
Yeah, that one we got from five sixes to final, it's got errors in it. Grammatical errors and we. Um, I don't know if you saw, except for you whether you wish to discuss it or not, but.
Uh, Sharpen?
So my understanding is that only the items that were listed in red were modified, so they may have been previous errors of the policy as it was written. I don't know it specifically.
They're not natured. I can collect.
Okay, so what were the?
Okay, well, if we're focusing only on the red, the apostrophes are wrong places. The boards, the board should be apostrophe S. And the work of the Publix should probably be apostrophe S. So those are the minor things in the red part, but then I had a few small things just above it. They're not content changes, but I've just, I didn't know this from the council that way, but that's just from grammatical standpoint, those two things are, in my opinion, incorrect. And I have, I, I thought we talked about the other ones on there. We changed the may, I understood that one there. But comments may be submitted by writing. It sounds strange. I thought we talked, I did, I think, in writing or orally presented. That, that's, that's all I had on there, but I, I thought we, I didn't go back and listen to the recording from the last meeting, but it would read to me smoothly. Comments may be submitted in writing or orally presented or both. That sounds simple. And then again, the apostrophes in the red. And that was all I had. I unfilled all the bullets. Anything else here?
Uh, yeah, it would make more sense if it said in. I imagine that would be too much of a legal difference. Um. All right, uh, trustee plus?
I, I would say, um, Publix doesn't need to even have enough possessive, just public experience.
Okay.
You need an apostrophe in this.
I'm interested.
All right, uh, do you have any other comments on that? Okay, so, uh, the board, I mean, that, that's just an obvious grammatical error. Do we need consensus on that?
So in the red part, the board work or boards work, is that what you?
Yeah, board, the apostrophe S.
Oh, sure.
And, um.
Yeah, the public.
Public, Publix.
Just public experience.
Okay, we can do that. I don't care.
Stayed a couple.
Okay, so we got two, uh, boss, public, is that, you know, on this? Okay, so yes, we have a majority consent on changing it to this public.
And then comments may be submitted in writing or orally presented.
And you presented time.
Okay, so change it to in writing. We have majority consent on that. Okay, uh, boss and Emily and myself, uh, I consent to that. Presentation.
Orally presented?
Um.
Sure.
Yes, trusty box.
I, I don't remember. I didn't write down what you said, but I would just say in writing comma orally or both.
I'm good with that.
I didn't, you don't need the or in front of orally. I'm writing orally or both.
Okay, so it would read comments may be submitted in writing, comma, orally or both. Okay, and I had consent to that and boss consents to that. Robinson, okay. Okay, so we have majority consent to make that change.
Oh, policies are easy.
Yeah. All right, so moving on. Next, we have. Okay, uh, appointment of officer slate nomination is next. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and bypass that so that we don't potentially violate open meeting laws as they may or may not have happened in previous years. Uh, so anyone can propose a slate or individual offers officers at our next meeting. Uh, and Treasurer Saad had an announcement.
Yes, um, I'm gonna have to announce that I'm not gonna be able to continue, um, as treasurer this, this next season. Cycle. Okay, it's been a pleasure to serve with everybody, just for personal reasons, um, I have to stop.
Okay. Well, we, yes, we appreciate your service and, uh, so, okay, everybody be thinking of, uh, likely candidates, including treasure. Uh, trustee.
And the treasurer stay on until there's a new treasurer?
Um.
Or, or at least within a reasonable timeline.
I mean, I'm available, um, I, I won't be, I won't be available to attend the next meeting, the next regular meeting in June, but I would be available to, to, you know, fulfill in my other normal obligations, um, you know, first part of June.
Okay, so everyone put on your thinking caps and, uh, we'll come up with something next month. So, um, all right. Uh, well, then we will move on to the next section, which is which is response to public comment. Uh, so last month, there was a comment regarding the extreme number of agenda items. Um, that's a repeat of criticisms that I have received from the board. Um, I believe that a statement was made to the effect that my twenty-one agenda items was the most we've ever had and I was cruising our, uh, previous agendas just to see how something was worded. Uh, last May before I was chair, uh, there was twenty-seven agenda items. And I looked through the entire year before I was chair and there was actually only three agendas, uh, regular agendas that had less than twenty-one items. Many, there was like twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, so the number of agenda items that I have had are not out of line with what has happened before. And also for special meetings, I was told that you're supposed to just focus on one thing. While I was looking at the special agenda meetings before I was chair and there was like four items on one and six on the other. Um, so apparently my agendas there haven't been out of line either. So it kind of just seems like it's fault finding to be fault finding and it's not, wasn't even true. So I hope that we can lay that for us now. And we can spend more time doing things that we need to get done. Anyway. Uh, is there any other public comments or?
No.
Are you going to public comment? No? Okay, uh, well, then if there is no objection, we will move on to the next section, uh, number, item number seventeen, which is executive session. Um, I'm not sure that we even have any new information to warrant going into executive session. Do we have anything to discuss? Or shall we forego this agenda item? Uh, Treasurer Robinson?
Um, I, I feel like we can't talk about if we have anything to discuss if we're not already in the session.
Say, yes, we do have something to discuss or no, we don't.
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right, um. I do, I think.
I would just maybe suggest that we make it clear to, uh, people attending whether or not we're going to re-discuss the tabled item or if it will be executive session and then no further discussion except the idea, the items that are listed after it.
Um, yeah, it would just depend on whether there's time or not. So if there's not time, then I would not want to pick it up off the table. Um. Yes, I don't know. I'm sorry.
So I would recommend that you discuss the tabled item now and leave fifteen minutes for the executive session and as courtesy and respect to the community members attending, allowing them to leave without further discussion or action.
Um, okay, uh, we would still have, uh, discussion of future agenda requests and set special and regular meeting dates. Or I guess we can do that first. Um, okay.
Sure.
So, uh, trustee Fox?
Do we, a basic question, do we need the attorney here to go in to have a fruitful executive session? Or was he gonna join remotely or did he send paperwork or something or?
No, he doesn't have to be here for us to go into executive session. Um, they, they probably would be useful, but, um, you know, it is what it is. Uh, so, uh, then we will put off the executive session for, uh, for now. Uh, we will go to discussion of future agenda requests. Um, do we have any? Trustee Henry?
I, I didn't, but I think we need to discuss the minor card policy in order to remain compliant with the new Idaho law taking place. And the reason I say that is because, just to put it in context, because sometimes people don't know what we're talking about on these agenda items. A minor can obtain materials in an adult card from libraries outside of CLN, including, I'll call it a more liberal library of Court Lane and Liberty Lake. And so that leaves us exposed because we let them, so that's why I'm seeing a need. And I hate opening another can of worms here because we have so many things to get done before the July first deadline. I think we need to discuss the minors card policy. It needs to be, in my opinion, tweaked in order to be compliant with the new law.
Okay, um, yeah, I was thinking that also, um, so I, I agree with you. Um, do, uh, trustee Fox?
I, I agree. I, I think just a simple tweak, not dealing with the whole thing, but a minor should not be able to get an adult access because it opens up and that is a huge hole. It always has been in that policy. Um, and it's.
So we're not, we're not going to discuss that. We're just.
And in addition, uh, we never have resolved this about how the attorney presents his finding. Last time we went to vote on it and we just trailed off and ended the discussion, but I, I would like to get us to give direction to the attorney of how to give his legal, like, if we give one of these policies to him, how to present the legal uh, suggestions to us or whatever he wants to do. We need to tell him. He's waiting for us to tell him.
Okay, um, yeah, I think what that was is that the the motion was too vague and it needs to be fine tuned. Um, so yes, I think that's already on the parking lot, so to speak. Um, and trustee Robinson, were you going to speak to the minor card policy? Or, and because I mean, we already have consent, but if you have something to say.
Well, yeah, okay, I, I have something to talk about for this number eighteen. Uh, first off, I would, I've already mentioned this. Um, I would like a list of things that are waiting to be on the agenda so that we can actually see them. And then it can be put in.
We, we already agreed to discuss that. It just didn't fit on today's schedule. Because it looked like it was so.
So that's what we're being discussed. That's not something we're just gonna do as we're literally talking about.
Okay, so right now we're only discussing whether to put something on a future agenda and you've already brought that up and we already had majority consensus. We to, that we agreed to discuss it. It just hasn't.
To discuss putting on future agendas list on underneath future agenda.
It's already, yeah, it will be on a future agenda to talk about.
Okay.
Parking lot idea.
Uh, and yes, the, uh, the minors, I know you have consensus, uh, majority consensus, but what I wanted to say about that is I don't believe that if, if, if it wants to be looked at, that's fine. I have no problem with that. I'll say yes to almost anybody if they want to look at something. But I don't think that the minor card policy has an urgency to it to be compliant to anything personally. So if it makes two, and there's no such thing as a simple tweak to a policy, come on now. But if it needs to be looked at, I say we wait until we actually have everything else in order. Because I really don't believe that that has anything to do with being compliant because in libraries in Idaho, they don't even have minor cards. Okay, so.
That's a no. That's a no. Or a yes.
So, yeah. Well, it's a no, no for now.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So I don't think it's urgent, right?
Right, Director?
Um, I just wanted to remind the board that in June, there is a statutory requirement for the board's election. Um, also on the agenda will be, I guess, the ICRAP adjuster and executive session, since that was delayed after this meeting and is timely. Um, and then again, we do have the budget requirement, which is also statutory requirement. Um, I think we will need to converse with legal about whether or not he can review three policies before July or before June twentieth. So I don't, I don't, I'm just gonna be real. I don't think that's realistic. I'm happy for the board to discuss it, but I think I've said this many times, the board needs to prioritize for me and for staff and I'll speak on behalf of legal counsel since he's not here. Please prioritize. He cannot always get everything done. I cannot always get everything done. And so I just want to put that out there. The, the, the priority should be the board election. The priority should be the ICRAP adjuster and executive session and the budget as well as the form required for reconsideration.
Okay, it does say that it will be moved to a future agenda. It doesn't say the next one. So it's just where, where things make sense and where we can fit them in. Okay, so if there's no further items for number eighteen, we'll move on to number nineteen, set special and regular meeting dates. Um, so budget meetings, does everyone have, uh, and then June twenty-seventh, two to four? Um, and I would actually say maybe, uh, that we add time to that one just in case. Hopefully it will come to that, um, in case we need to approve the uh, materials policies on that date. Uh, Director?
I had requested June twentieth as the final deadline. It is outrageous for the board to expect staff to be able to implement something in three days.
Um, well, it wouldn't be implemented until, um, until the form comes in, which wouldn't be until the first.
So you think three days is adequate for staff, training all staff?
I know two of those days is a weekend.
Yeah, uh, no, I don't. I just would like to leave it open just in case, but you know, yeah, I, I want to get cracking and get this done as soon as possible and not have it be then, but just in case or not. Uh, in case, you know, we didn't get it to legal in time and for review, I would like to have that option.
So I believe the board has a special meeting on, was it June twenty-fourth for training? So it's not budget related, but I know that, yeah, so that is still, um, not a great option for staff. But I, I would at least allow the staff a week. We have to get it on the website. We have to. We don't have that email currently that was listed in, in the proposal that I gave. Uh, there's a lot more.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a better idea. I just, it wasn't on the list and somebody rainbow isn't thinking that. Uh, trustee Robinson?
I don't have anything on my calendar for June twenty-fourth, so maybe I left the meeting early or something?
Uh, it was emailed. It's the Idaho Commission for Libraries Training. Okay, um.
Yeah, there was, I can clarify. There, there was a, a placeholder email or something put out saving the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh because an ICRAP training consultant rep was gonna be out here. I believe that's what it was. And then only yesterday, today, we got an email from the director identifying that Monday, the twenty-fourth, from four until six is open meeting law and physical record and policies procedures being presented again by Idaho, the, um, Commission for Libraries. That's what I got.
Twilight meeting? I mean, there was a, save all three of those days? I missed that. Yeah, yeah, the other dates are now, he's scheduled for the June twenty-fourth.
That part I knew. Um, so June twenty-fourth, four to six.
Yeah, four. Yeah, four to six, and maybe we could just leave it open ended if we need to do. Materials stuff after we get the training. So just.
When we get our dinner?
Yeah, how about before?
What was the twentieth?
Six twenty four, we're talking about the ICFL. It's not on this list, but it was in an email yesterday. Oh, right.
We need to talk about the time.
It was two to four on the twenty seventh.
Well, that's the limits at Harrison.
If I can speak the meeting at Harrison on the twentieth, they open at one o'clock that day. And Emily, last year, we had the meeting from like nine to twelve. Which would be nice to do again, so we don't interrupt one of their days of service. And that doesn't work there closed on Mondays, so you could move the regular meeting to a Monday.
So you want to have objection or difference?
I prefer the afternoon.
Thank you, too.
I prefer the afternoon.
Okay, so maybe move it to the seventeenth.
Is that bad?
It's just incredibly taxing having to take everything to Harrison and then drive back kind of in the dark. And it makes for a very long day if the meetings don't end until five thirty.
That's not, that should be the summer ephemerax, right? So it should be the longest day of year. So I mean, I understand what you're saying, saying.
Really open a few hours.
So be now the beginning of seventeenth or the twenty fourth? Is that what we are? You know, I heard Mondays were if it's if it's in afternoon, it's a Monday then. Is that correct?
Uh, so could we do the seventeenth at like two to five or two to five thirty?
Well, I'm fine on Thursday. I mean, I can get up early if it's, you know, I mean, I I have no other reason to say no for Thursday besides the fact that I don't want getting up early. So I'm not gonna be selfish. I'm just gonna say I can do nine AM on the twentieth.
I like afternoons personally.
You just said afternoon, didn't you?
That would be the seventeenth, but that wouldn't.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with either one.
Well, if I understood correctly, they're open. We can't have it in the afternoon on twentieth. Because they're open.
You said they're close on.
They're closed on Monday, so we can do the seventeenth or twenty fourth.
Monday, so we could do the afternoon on a Monday.
So I, yeah, I would prefer so I don't come in all haggard in my brain could function. Okay, so we have the majority consent of Pam, Panley, Plus and Odison for the seventeenth at from two to five thirty.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Can I?
Two to five thirty?
Since it's on a Monday, you, you know, we're preferring afternoon. But it might be late for some people. Can, do you want to move it up a little earlier in the afternoon?
You can't make it.
Like later.
Okay, all right. So then we have the Harrison one on six seventeen, two to five thirty. Back to the budget meetings, six twenty seven, two to four. Does that work for everyone?
Repeat it again.
On six twenty seven from two to four?
Yeah, we had that.
Okay. Or well, that's one person saying yes. I mean, yes. Like listed out for us earlier. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and listen and boss.
That's that's fine, the twenty seventh, but are you going to alter the time on the twenty fourth to try to get it done sooner?
Um, yes, okay, so we did have majority consent on the six twenty seven, two to four, six twenty four. You you would like to meet like at two?
Those two or four we had once. I think we had it as two. It was proposing by a director to do a budgets. From two to four originally. It was never confirmed. I don't think.
Okay, the twenty fourth, sorry, back and forth. This is the Idaho Commission for Libraries Training from four to six.
Four to six.
Oh, I was just, I was just suggesting instead of staying later, if you want it, was to to have it before. Because four to six, then you're going to six to eight, you know, so.
Two to four, or actually so it ended being two to six on June twenty fourth. With that?
Yeah.
Two to four would be materials policies.
Oh, oh, oh. So wait a minute, what about the budget not being done before the twenty seventh? I thought staff said that that needed more time to to be completed.
That was the first budget meeting. It's the twenty seventh of June. Isn't it?
It's the thirtieth of May. It's the first.
I'll back up.
My comment was that the material policies need staff need time to implement.
Well, material, oh, sorry, okay.
So waiting until the twenty seventh and giving staff three days, which is a weekend to get everything done.
And hopefully will be done before the twenty fourth, but just in case, I would like to have that space reserved out. Okay, so it looks like we did have majority, if not unanimous, I can give it unanimous from two to six on six twenty four with two hours being material policy and then the ICFL training. All right. Uh, trust plus?
So so that training is that? The agent from IC or the employee from ICFL coming.
Boy, yes.
In person.
Yes. He's a boy north. I think it's a man.
I didn't say boy.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood. Anyway, yeah, Clay Ritter will be up in our area and we reserve.
And and he's going to give live training to us.
Yes, live train.
The kind of video thing.
Okay, so on to the next budget meeting, seven twenty five, two to four PM. Does that work for everybody?
Sixteen twenty five, what, two to four? Don't worry.
Yeah, two to four, yes.
Oh, seven, July twenty fifth?
Yep.
I'm out of town. I'm out of town the twenty seventh to the twenty fifth on that week, so.
Oh, so you're, okay, so you could maybe meet on the twenty sixth. And it's the twenty sixth for everyone else, same time? So instead of seven twenty five, we would meet seven twenty six, we'll get four.
Much appreciated.
Yes, okay, so. All right, we've already agreed to the August eighth one. And so the next one is August twenty second at six PM, possible budget approval.
And this, which one, eighth?
August twenty second.
What happened to the August? There was an August placeholder for August twen- fifteenth. It started in, oh, is that why? You're right.
August fifteenth, I think so.
Yeah, it was written in there as possible budget approval at that meeting. Okay.
Yeah, and I think it has worked. In past discussions, we have done them separately, just in case there's something else that needs to be done. So I'm good for eight twenty two at six PM. Is everyone else?
Why is, why is it so short? Is it just to come in and?
Who? Yep.
So at that point, there's no discussion.
That's indefinite. Twenty second, as long as people want to present, isn't it?
No, that's the eighth.
Oh.
I didn't hear.
Yeah.
Oh, you're hearing, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, this is the budget approval.
Right.
So hopefully we'll just be at.
For which state are we on now?
Uh, eight twenty two.
Six PM, okay, I didn't have any end time.
Yeah, it usually doesn't take very long.
Is it six o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
So everyone's good with eight twenty two?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we have majority consent on that one also. All right. I guess trust plus.
I think we need another special medium before the thirtieth of May to continue this policy. Or otherwise, we're putting it off till the seventeenth of June, is that right? That's gonna be the next time to talk about it.
Okay, so the May thirtieth is a budget discussion. We could climb on to that for materials policy since we're already already been meeting or we could have a separate one. I tend to like to just everything done at once, but that doesn't mean that works for everyone else.
Looking tight on that, I forgot you said.
Okay, so. Five. Five thirty meeting is from three.
Till five.
Five. Uh, you guys want to tack on time before or after?
May thirtieth meeting is three to five. It says two to four here.
I can three to four.
And then she.
Yeah, I think that we had changed that in the meeting from three to five.
Probably a little like maybe two, like tap on before.
Okay, yeah, I'm thinking actually already we moved it from.
Oh.
Four is because it didn't two o'clock didn't work for someone. So she was leave it open ended at the end. For materials policy at the end of the five thirty meeting.
We need a time when it's gonna stop so we can book their room and like to know if we can let other people use it.
Okay, add another two hours. Five to seven, yeah. Three to three to three to seven. And then, yeah, the five to seven would be the materials portion.
We have a pizza.
If you're.
Um, I think so that's. Well, I think we definitely need another. Yeah, I know. We do need, we do need another policy discussion. We're gonna run out of time. So whether it's there or a special meeting, we got a little ways to go on apparently on these policies.
I would go maybe two thirty to six or six thirty. See if we can move it just a little bit earlier.
Okay, who who was it that the two o'clock didn't work for?
I think I I said it was only gonna be two hours. I'd rather have it a little bit later.
Okay.
But I don't, I I could do two o'clock if I was the one.
Okay, uh, well, then should we do two to six?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that and then family can get his grab on. All right, then is that good for now? All right, so it's five seventeen and we will go to. Okay, so you're the one who thought that we did have something to discuss in executive session. We're not gonna have time for materials policy and executive session, so probably just.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was on the table. Doesn't mean you have to pick it up. It just means that you can.
I think it's important that we go in.
Okay.
Whether there's much to discuss or not, I don't know. Well, we can't discuss it unless we go in.
Okay, then I would, then we would have no further items other than adjournment after the executive session. And I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho code seventy four two oh six one V D.
I I moved that we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho code seventy four two oh six one B D.
It has been moved to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho code seventy four two oh six one B D. This is a roll call vote. Robinson?
Robinson.
Okay, and Austin is I, so is unanimous, and we are now going to go into executive session, which is just for the board. So.